Order of the City Council of Belleville, August 3rd, 2020. At this time, I'd ask the city clerk to call the role of Alderman.
Alderman Consilla?
Here.
Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderman Pousa?
Here.
Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dintelman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Wygon?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington? Alderman Barfield?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington is excused. He wasn't sure if he could make it or not. This time, I'd like to call the role of the department heads.
City Treasurer Hart?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay? Fire Chief Tom Poor? Finance Director Jamie Maitreit?
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill?
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman?
Here.
City Engineer Michael Beloff?
Here.
Human Resources Manager McQualls?
Here.
Everybody's here? I didn't call Scott Markovich because he ties up.
It's tied here for Scott. Okay. Very good. We have a complete group here. At this time, I would ask all those who are able to join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no public hearing this evening, so I will go next to public participation. If you would like to participate and you're on the phone tonight, please speak up, and I will recognize you for two to three minutes. Hopefully, it's on a topic of the agenda. Certainly, it must be on something regarding to city business. Anybody this evening?
Sand or Crockett with Sip and Chew Express?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. We are having the second portion for the outdoor seating.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. It's correct. Yeah, you're on tonight.
Okay.
And that's coming up under 11B1. And it's a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining for Sip and Chew Express Cafe in 124 West Main. Okay?
Yes.
It was unanimously recommended by the zoning board, and it's coming before this group tonight. And you can stay listening in. If there would be a question, we would ask you, but I don't think, I have not heard of anything proposed today.
Okay, thanks. Come on.
You're welcome, ma'am. Anybody else today on this public participation?
Yes, my name is Tom Patrakovic for representing Kurt Smith, so I'm here tonight.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name?
Yes, it's Tomich Patrakovic.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Okay, very good. They're on the agenda also under zoning for their awning. Was there another person that spoke up?
Yeah, Lynn Clapp with Human Relations Commission.
I was looking for you. Okay, Mr. Clapp, you want to go ahead and talk a little bit about the Human Relations Commission?
I can do that. So hello to everybody this evening. Hope you're all safe. It's time for the City of Belleville's Human Relations Commission to reemerge from the pandemic and begin the process of really making itself a viable resource again. I've reached out to the seven current members to make sure they're still current. We have two, maybe three additional potential candidates, but we will need at least three more to complete our complement of 13 members. I would very much like to be able to present a full slate of members for council approval within the next month, and your help would be appreciated, the council's help. Do you have potential candidates in your precincts that you would consider recommending? We are looking for candidates that represent the diversity of Belleville, including the LGBTQT community, disabled population, religion, and additional racial and ethnic populations. And we would really like to enlist some younger citizens as well, where all start to get a little old and gray and short of two. So the requirement is simple. A candidate must live in Belleville, or work, or own a business in Belleville. And we really hope to forge a new identity for the HRC that goes beyond the role of mediator and resource for disputes, and would appreciate the council's help. That's all.
Thanks, Lynn. And if anybody has suggested names, or if anybody themselves, please contact my office. These were our appointments that I will bring forward to the council. And like Lynn said, we'll probably be shooting for approximately the first meeting of September. Right, Lynn?
Yes, that would be perfect.
Okay. Okay, very good. Lynn, thanks for the update, and thanks for continuing to get us revitalized in that very important committee. Okay, at this time, if there's no one else for public participation, is there?
Just tell me.
Who is this?
My name is Chris Lawler.
Okay, Kurt, is that your first name?
Chris, Christopher Lawler.
Okay, and what is the topic, sir?
I've got an application for a special use permit for 912 Wallbush Avenue.
Okay, okay. And I see I have them just looking.
Sorry, I just now got on here because I couldn't figure out how to get work this thing.
You have a, yeah, I see. I see here, 11B2. Okay, alrighty. It was also unanimously recommended by the zoning board, Ward 6. So if there's a question specifically that they need from you, they will answer and ask it then. If not, they will come to a vote during the meeting, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone else this evening? Hearing none, I will close public participation. At this time, I'm going to move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. The first thing this evening is to, as we do the first meeting of each month, recognize the character word of the month. This month is caring, meaning being compassionate and showing others you care. Very important, these character words, more now than ever. With all the, I guess, the uniqueness of our times right now, with all the different pressures and challenges, I think to follow the character words is a must, but the word caring is certainly something that we need to remember. So as we move on to the next thing, a couple of weeks ago, you heard me mention that Deputy Fire Chief Bud Jacobs was going to retire. And Bud's last day at work, he turned, signed off at nine o'clock Saturday morning. And that was the last of his official tour of duty. He has about two weeks vacation, and then he'll be officially off the books. And I am recommending tonight, after talking with our chief and Bud for some great lengths, I had this gentleman in mind, but we all three unanimously agreed that the best appointment for this position at this time is to ask Battalion Chief David Elzon to be promoted to Deputy Fire Chief effective 12:01 a.m., August 15th, 2020. This is my recommendation. This is appointment of the mayor, the top two places, the top two administrative positions in the fire department, chief and deputy, are appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. Dave has an outstanding background with this fire department, and he also has an extreme reputation for his particularness, his safety skills, and his trained, he's very well-trained. And this would be one of the things that he will be taking over from Bud, is the training component, as well as many other duties of the Belleville Fire Department, and to assist Tom Poor in any duties that he would so ask him to assist in. So my recommendation, I'm asking for a motion to appoint David Elzon as Deputy Fire Chief.
Hey, Jay, I want to know.
I got Schaefer.
Duco?
Schaefer and Duco.
Schaefer and Duco. Boy, they're fighting over to make the motion. We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any questions about my recommendation?
Unmuted.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion passes. Tom, do you want to introduce Dave here? We got the video on, and Dave's in the audience here. There's a...
Yeah, so we'd like to, you know, one of the few things we do is have this right-hand badge on.
Sure. Come on up, family. That's fine. The big question is if Tom can find a badge.
I can. This way, if we draw blood, it's not me, it's the family members drawing blood, so.
We leave first. Muted.
Oh, he gets a new white helmet? Yeah, look at that. Dave, I appreciate you accepting my recommendation. I look forward to working with you. We've known each other a long time in your family, and I know you'll do great things to help us continue to promote the fire service here in Belleville. And we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but it's been a good ride so far.
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate the confidence you've got in me and with Chief Poor. You know, I think we can continue the process that Deputy Chief Jacobs started.
Yeah, I agree, and I look forward to working with both of you in the future and the rest of the department. Thank you. Thanks to your family for being here tonight. One thing I want to say to the rest of the Aldermen on the line, Bud had a family engagement tonight. Otherwise, we would have recognized him with a plaque tonight. If, if, he's asked that we, he would consider on the first meeting of September. So I told him we will gladly meet with him on the first meeting of September, and we will certainly recognize his 27 years of service and his excellent leadership. So that's, that's why we're not doing that tonight. It was at his request. So to the Zon family, we thank all of you for being here. And this is a big, this is a big deal. And we look forward to seeing you at other such events. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We go on now to the regular portion of the minute, meeting. Approval of the minutes from the City Council meeting minutes of July 20th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Motion Steele.
Steele and Pousa. Motion in second to approve the City Council meeting minutes of July 20th. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mayor, this is Ken Consilla.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
Since 8A, 9A, 10A, and 10B are relatively, they're very common motions, can we make a motion to do all of those as a group? Or is that...
I would like to keep the minutes and the payroll and that separate, but we can do the 10A and B together. Okay?
Fine, okay.
10A, very good. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Are there any other questions about tonight's City Council minutes that are in your packet? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $698,652.01 and the payroll in the amount of $803,172.96. Do I hear a motion?
No, I can't hear it.
Okay, try that again.
Schaefer?
Schaefer and who's next?
Dintelman.
Dintelman. Schaefer and Dintelman made the second to approve the claims, payroll, and disbursements. Any questions about those numbers? Hearing none, roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian? Dintelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I've asked for a motion to approve the City Attorney's report dated July 31st, 2020.
Are we going to do all three together?
And if it's okay, then we could do a motion included to approve the Treasurer's report, June 20th, 2020, and 10B1, motion to approve the Statement of Cash and Investments report, June 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve and accept those three reports?
Okay.
I heard Ferguson and Duco.
Ferguson and Duco, you got good ears. Ferguson and Duco have made the motion and made the second. Are there any questions about those three reports in your packet? Hearing no questions, roll call.
Pousa?
Here.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian? Ovian?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion's carrying. Motion coming from administration. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve waiving the bid process and use the state bid contractor, Morrow Brothers Ford, to directly purchase six police interceptor vehicles for the fiscal year 2020 slash 2021. Let me explain something here. Last year's cars have been greatly slowed down for a number of different reasons. We still don't have them. We're supposed to get them by the end of May. We need to get these cars ordered because we have no idea with the environment, where this COVID environment and all the things that are happening, how quick we'll get them. Our cars only have a $100,000, $100,000 mile warranty on a lot of the different parts, motors, drivetrains, et cetera. And we're finding that the ones that we haven't replaced yet, that are still going frontline, are getting closer and closer to that $100,000 miles. So it's going to get a lot more expensive, and we really, you know, this is coming on a tiff, and we really believe that this is very necessary to get these cars appropriated right now and get them moving. So do I hear a motion to approve my recommendation to order these six cars?
Schaefer?
Schaefer made the motion, and do I hear a second?
Duco?
Duco made the second, what did he say?
Duco.
Schaefer and Duco, first and second. Is there any questions now, further questions about this item?
Elmore, I assume we're talking Tiff 3?
Yes. Yes, sir. Any other question?
Anthony, man.
What's that?
Anthony.
Yes, sir, Johnny.
Anthony, question?
Yes.
Are these all SUV-type vehicles?
Yes, John, yes, Alderman. They're all SUV, police package interceptors. We've had good luck with them, and they, they've been, they've been serving us very well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa? Pousa? Pousa?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We go now to 11A2. At this time, I'd like to ask for someone to consider making a motion to approve the waiving the bid process and utilize Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Alliance to purchase one 2020 Caterpillar Inc. Model 420 backhoe loader from Fabic Cat in the amount of $113,870,000. We, we've been wanting to get one of these the last couple of years, and we're afraid that if we put it off much longer, we're going to have equipment breaking down because they're, they're starting to really get older with age and hours on them. So we really need to get this piece of equipment ordered. It's going to take quite a few months to get, I think, also. Do I hear a motion for, for Street Department?
Rothweiler moved.
Rothweiler, who was the second?
Dintelman.
Dintelman. We have a motion and we have a second to approve this recommendation to buy this backhoe. Any other questions? Roll call.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dintelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to 11B, Zoning Board of Appeals. Are there any objections if I ask the clerk to read these as a group?
Yes, Mayor. 11B4, I want to, I want to know a little bit more about that one.
So you want to pull...
If somebody from Ward 2 could tell me a little bit about... About the... Do you want Ward 2, or do you want staff to explain?
Go ahead, Anissa. Go ahead, explain what you got.
Okay, so this property at 530 South 20th Street was historically built as a triplex. There are actually currently on site three, um, three meters, three electrical meters for the building, as well as three separate entrances. However, the, the current owner, who is selling to the petitioner, utilized it as a single-family home. Although, given the history, it was at some point used as a triplex. So the petitioner, who is the applicant, and the, has a contract to purchase, has a request to allow the house to revert back to being used as a triplex with the understanding that this zoning procedure would be necessary in order to do so. And so that is the request, is the house has been utilized by the current owner, who is selling it as a single-family home. However, the house is historically a triplex. It is registered with St. Clair County Assessor and taxed as a multifamily unit. And the applicant is requesting the procedure in order to reestablish the multifamily use. So that is the request before you this evening.
Anissa, I see where it was unanimously recommended by the zoning board. Were there people there from the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Were there people there from the neighborhood to speak against it?
No, there was no one from the neighborhood that spoke against it. The applicant was on the call. The owner of, the current owner of the property was on the call, as well as the realtor, to explain the history of the property and how it came to be utilized as a single-family residence. It had been a home that had been utilized by different family members. And so now, what they're requesting is to be able to sell it to someone who would use it as a rental property.
Okay. Okay. Is there someone willing? So Alderman Ovian, do you still want to separate that one out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to have the clerk read... I'm sorry?
Mayor, let her, let her go ahead and have that, have that into all of them. Let's just vote on it.
Okay.
Let's just vote on all of them. I just know some background on that.
Okay, very good. So we're going to go ahead with no objection, have the city clerk read all the zoning board of appeals recommendations. Okay.
11B1, 28 July 20th, Antonio Backston, a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining for Sip and Chew Express, a cafe bar at 124 West Main Street, parcel 08210-443-044, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248 and 162.515. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five Ward two. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B two, thirty July twenty, Christopher Lawrence, a request for a special use permit to establish a metal sided garage at nine twelve Wabash Avenue, parcel zero eight two six zero three zero 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 three two. Located in an A two two family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, one six two point one six nine and one six two point five one five Ward six. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B three, thirty one July twenty, Kurt Smith Sporting Goods Incorporated, a request for a sign installation permit for area of special control to install awning signage for Kurt Smith Sporting Goods at two thirteen East Main Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three three four zero three nine. Located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the sign code, one five five point oh five two and one five five point oh five three Ward two. Zoning board recommended approval by a majority vote of four to one. Eleven B four, thirty two July twentieth, Cullen Properties LLC, a request for a use variance to establish a multifamily dwelling, three units, at five thirty South twentieth Street, parcel zero eight two zero zero three one seven zero zero nine. Located in an A one single family residence district. Applicable section of the zoning code, one six two point five seven zero Ward two. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Anybody else lose connection?
Yeah, Consilla lost connection. Something must have happened, this is Anissa.
Unmuted.
I think it has something to do with them outside.
Can you guys hear us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, now.
Okay. Eleven B five, thirty three July twentieth, Zachary A. Bear, a request for a use variance to establish a two family dwelling at ten North Church Street, parcel number zero eight two two zero three three five zero zero nine. Located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, one six two point five seven zero Ward two. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B six, thirty four July twentieth, Zachary A. Bear, a request for a special use permit to use the first floor of ten North Church Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three three five zero zero nine, for personal storage, located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five Ward two. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Okay, at this time, I would ask if there's a motion to approve the zoning cases. Eleven B one, eleven B two, eleven B three, eleven B four, eleven B five, and eleven B six. Do I hear a motion?
Both of you?
Motion by Steele and second by Ovian? Okay?
That's good.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor, I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Mayor, this is Alderman Ferguson. On eleven B one, precipitant two, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, the sidewalk where they are seated with the tables and chairs, the sidewalk is coming apart, where the brick is on the sidewalk, you see it's disintegrating.
I need, I, I saw that just a couple of days ago. And I need to get the city engineer and myself over there, and we need to get a work order in, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're good, okay?
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant? Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications, once again, I go back to the clerk for two communications this evening. Under section twelve.
Can I read them together?
Yeah.
Yes.
Twelve A, A R C Blood Drive, American Red Cross, request to host a blood drive at firehouse number four on Monday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Two PM to seven PM, COVID safety measures to be followed. Twelve B, sorry, music at the venue? Venue on Main, request to host music. Two musicians maximum per event at the venue. On Friday, August seventh, Friday, August twenty first, Friday, September fourth, Friday, September eighteenth, Friday, October ninth, Friday, October sixteenth, and Friday, October thirtieth. Street closure request, first block of South Second Street to Alley. Four PM to eleven PM on all dates. Additional request of barricades, tables will be socially distanced.
Do I hear a motion to approve those two communication requests?
Schaefer?
Schaefer?
Duco?
Schaefer and Dittelman. Any discussion on those two items? Hearing none, roll call.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no petitions, resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Resolution thirty three eighty nine. Do I hear a motion?
Schaefer, Weigant.
Schaefer and Weigant. We have a motion, a second to read, resolution thirty three eighty nine by title only. Roll call.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye. Oh, Alex is gonna go in, can we go in over here? I'm sorry, I have a pickup, but they forgot a few things, so I'm just gonna get in.
Rothweiler, aye.
Thank you. Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco? Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to? I'm sorry, please do.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty three eighty nine, twenty twenty. Resolution implementing local measures related to the Restore Illinois Guidelines mitigation plan for business operations during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution thirty three eighty nine?
Ferguson.
Ferguson and? Was it Schaefer?
Duco?
Duco. Ferguson and Duco. Okay. What I want to point out is, the recommendation that we're adding on here is to extend this outside and street closures and outside availability through and including November fourteenth, two thousand twenty. This will give them more airspace outside where we, we know it's safer. And the weather in the fall is usually a lot more conducive to outside dining. And we thought it was best to go ahead and have them plan on it now. We are concerned about some of the recent concerns with the COVID numbers. I don't hope, I hope and pray we don't lose any inside status. But if that were to happen, this would put us in place to keep the outside dining going longer and to help the restaurants and bars as best we can. So with that said, we have a motion and a second. So with that, is there any further discussion or questions about this resolution? Roll call.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Excuse me, where do I find onions?
Um, can you please mute your phones if you're not an Alderman that's doing roll call? Sorry, Weigant? Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Resolution passes, we go now to ordinance under number fifteen. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinance eighty eight fifty seven, eighty eight fifty eight, eighty eight fifty nine, eighty eight sixty, eighty eight sixty one, and eighty eight sixty two.
And as a group?
And as a group, is that okay?
Yes.
So I'm looking for a motion in a second to read those ordinances by title only and as a group. Who made the motion?
Weigant. Steele?
Steele, okay, who, who made the second?
Weigant.
Weigant. Okay, we got that. We have a motion, a second to read by title only and as a group, roll call.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries, you can read.
Fifteen A, ordinance eighty eight fifty seven, twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to twenty eight July twentieth, Antonio Backston. Fifteen B, ordinance eighty eight fifty eight, twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty July twentieth, Christopher Lawrence. Fifteen C, ordinance eighty eight fifty nine, twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty one July twentieth, Kurt Smith Sporting Goods Incorporated. Fifteen D, ordinance eighty eight sixty, twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty two July twentieth, Cullen Properties LLC. Fifteen E, ordinance eighty eight sixty one, twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty three July twentieth, Zachary A. Bear. Fifteen F, ordinance eighty eight sixty two, twenty twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty four July twentieth, Zachary A. Bear.
Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance eighty eight fifty seven, fifty eight, fifty nine, sixty, sixty one, and sixty two?
Duco?
Duco and Ferguson, motion in a second. Any questions about any of those ordinances that were just read? Hearing none, roll call.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Motion carries, unfinished business. Miscellaneous and new business.
Yes, Mayor, if I can get, get one second?
Yes, sir.
Elmore. I'd just like to make sure that all the Aldermen saw the email from Jennifer Ferguson. She wrote a nice press release on the food drive that's coming up this Friday night. This is something that we've tried to do. Dennis and I have tried to do this in our ward, and it's been quite successful. And you don't have to have a crystal ball to realize that the way this pandemic is going, that you can see that the need for basic necessities is only growing. And it's about to get probably quite, quite serious. So we opened up this food drive with the great support of Bennys and Big Daddys to see if we can get a citywide involvement. And very appreciative to them, very appreciative to Jennifer Ferguson for helping us with the media outreach. And I hope that we see all the other Aldermen down there Friday night between five and nine, thank you.
Very good. We did, I did speak with Benny. And we're not having any music like originally planned because the last thing we want to do with the concerns of this coronavirus, COVID nineteen getting more and more in the news every day, we don't want to create a festival-like environment. So that, that'll maybe happen.
I couldn't agree more, and thank you for doing that. Benny was really cooperative, I heard, and that's great. It's not about drawing a crowd. And I've repositioned some volunteers, and it's gonna be very drop-off oriented. And it's not meant to generate a crowd, it's not to help feed the needy.
We appreciate that very much. And, and the food pantries?
Mayor?
Yes?
This Alderman, Ovian, last week, and I think it's gonna continue this week as well. The Schnucks store at Country Club Plaza was basically providing personnel there to go ahead and ask that we buy canned goods or certain items that they were short of at the food pantries. And it was very well received by the shoppers.
I, I saw that, and I appreciate everybody who participates in any and all of those kind of events. A lot of our citizens are hurting right now. And they do definitely really appreciate having the food available to them. So thank you, one and all. At this time, I'd ask for a motion? Yes? Yes?
Mayor, oh, Rand?
Yes?
This is Weigant.
Okay.
To do with this, but if he had a chance, if you can give me a call tonight or tomorrow, I got a concern that came up in my ward, I have to discuss with you.
Okay, first thing tomorrow morning, can you call me?
Okay, I will.
Call me as early as you like, okay, that's fine. Was there somebody else?
Mayor Alderman Randall?
Yes?
Several weeks ago, you and I had a conversation about possibly providing the food pantry with a monthly stipend from our Community and General Assistance Fund. And I think that you mentioned something about the state under the CARES Act providing, but not, didn't know if it's set, and I'm not sure what kind of follow-up there's been along that proposal.
We gave them through Community Assistance. Jamie, can you, can you, are you on the line? Did, did we just send them ten thousand? What, Jamie?
Mayor, this is Lee.
Okay, Lee, Lee, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We haven't given them anything this fiscal year, but we did give them, I believe, ten thousand last fiscal year.
Okay, and it's in the budget. So we were going to check with them and get that check going. uh, check going, as well as I know that they, they were supposed to, when I talked to them, uh, they were slated to get some money passed through to them. Uh, when the governor came down that day and, and actually was at the food pantry location, the CARES Act was supposed to be giving them some extra funds. So we will check with, uh, Jim Young, who's just one of the board members, and, uh, if, if that hasn't happened recently, we'll see about getting our amount that we have budgeted for this year. Uh, we could certainly possibly, uh, send it earlier, but the last I talked to Mr. Young, he was, he was actually very, very pleased with the response recently, and said at the moment, they were doing, they were doing good. So I will follow up with him again and, and see about our next pledge that we have in the budget, and I'll see if the CARES money is truly coming through. If not, then Alderman Randall, as I told you then, we could talk about the possibility of any additional funding we might want to consider. Okay?
Appreciate that, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, very good, and I'll follow up on that as soon as this, next, tomorrow. Okay, at this time, we have a motor fuel claims in the amount of $10,965.63. Do I hear a motion?
Dittelman?
Dittelman, second.
Ferguson.
Ferguson. We have a motion and a second to pay the motor fuel claims. Uh, any questions about that bill? Hearing none, roll call.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco? Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothwiler?
Hi.
Motion carries. Garrett, just want to double-check, the, uh, Workman's Comp case got put off to the next meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, if, if there's no need to go into executive session, I'm gonna ask you, unless you have some particulars you want to discuss about this, but I would ask for someone to possibly make a motion to recall the sewer collection employees from unpaid furlough status effective August 4, 2020. The staff and I and the treasurer, um, so we would, the motion would actually read, motion to recall Sherri Wright and Sarah Beerman Sewer Collections from unpaid furlough status effective August 4, 2020. This is our recommendation from all of us, from administration.
Elmore, go ahead and make that motion, it's on Sherri Wright and, I'm sorry, the other name, but...
Sherri Wright and Sarah Beerman. Motion by Elmore? Who was the second? Rothwiler seconded. So, so we have a motion and a second to recall Sherri Wright and Sarah Beerman Sewer Collections from the unpaid furlough status effective August 4. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mayor Alderman?
What's that, go ahead.
Yeah, Alderman Randall, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm very pleased to see that we're, uh, bringing back a number of folks, but I guess my question would be from Jamie. Has there been a positive trend in terms of our revenue numbers?
Well, these two employees specifically are paid from our sewer fund, um, not from any, not from the general fund that has had the issues with sales tax or income tax, um, but we have seen a better trend than expected for the, um, March and April sales tax that we've collected, and this week we should find out about May sales tax.
So we're, we're, we're still cautiously watching, but it's been, it's been better than what we thought it might be, so that's good news. But this, these two people, and this is based on the fact that the water company has been talking to us, and, and they're, uh, we, we need to get these two girls back in the office. So, we have a motion and we have a second, roll call, vote.
Wygant?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothwiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Ferguson, Ferguson moves.
Ferguson, who was the second?
Rothwiler.
Rothwiler. We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Roll call.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.